Okay, call the order. Let's, Stanford, a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take a moment of silence and pray for the people of Ukraine. Okay. We have an application in front of us tonight, and this is a continuation of the public hearing. The applicant is ZB 22001. The applicant is David Corran, tax parcel 6356-03-108498, 53 McGrath Terrace. It's an R-40 zoning district, 2.1 acres. Should I read this whole thing? Should I read this whole?
Probably should. Sorry.
Okay.
Next time I'll read it.
The applicant seeks the following avenue of relief for the purpose of construction of 22 feet 6 inch by 38 foot attached garage with bonus room and storage above. A front right side variance of 11 feet 6 inches where 25 foot is the minimum setback requirement, said variance would result in a 13 feet 6 inch front right side setback. The rear right side variance of 17 feet 9 inches where 25 feet is the minimum setback requirement, said variance would result in a rear setback of 7 feet 3 inches. Said requests are in violation of Fishkill Town Code S 150-37B and the schedule of regulations for residential districts. The next zoning board of appeals scheduled for April 19th with a submission deadline of Tuesday, March 22nd, 2021 by 2:30 PM. Notice of continuation of public hearing. Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the town of Fishkill will continue the public hearing tonight, March 15th, commenced at 7:00 PM in this room, to consider an area variance for David Corran who seeks to follow an avenue of relief for the purpose of construction of 22 foot 6 inch by 38 foot attached garage. I went through all of that, so. The land affected by this application generally known as Tax MAP Section 6356 Block 03 Lot 108498 located at 53 McGrath Terrace. Consists 2.1 acres and R-40 zoning district. Please take further notice that the zoning board of appeals has not made a determination of certificates pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and hereby reserves its right to make such a determination after the conclusion of the public hearing. All interested persons will be heard by the zoning board of appeals at the public hearing as stated above. Okay. I'm sure that there are some people who want to come forward, and anybody want to come forward tonight?
I think the first thing would be ask the applicant to come up if the applicant has anything that he would like to address. I think that would be the best way to start it off.
Okay, Mr. Corran. Did I have to take a motion to have the public hearing or was it just a continuation?
No, the public hearing remains open. It's open. No need for a motion.
All right. Mr. Corran, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. Okay. This is the continuation, like you said, about the area variance in which I'm looking. Last meeting, I believe it was the attorney that was asking for a proposed driveway to be shown on the survey, and that's what we see up here on this. This is Rev. 1 done by my surveyor, and the proposed driveway is shown there right off of my regular driveway, which goes right to the proposed addition. Debbie, can you go to, can you click it to number two? Well, number two was actually what Ron went over, was the application for the area variance with the updated setbacks and everything on there, so. But the attorney did ask what the lot coverage was, and it went from 11% to 11.4 with the What we're looking at is just the plot plan that I drew up. I believe one of the other members was asking for some information on, you know, the tree lines and the shrubs and what type of border that I'm actually putting up there, so. This, the very small little circles on there is actually showing like the trees that are existing on the property. Also showing, I'm looking to put a 6-foot privacy fence, which is the Xs that are coming down all the way down the property line. Originally, I was going to end it by the shed, but I'm going to go to the end of my property just to take it all the way down to the end, so there's going to be no view from their house to my house or to my property. If we could go to the next one, Debbie. That's not it.
That's all I have.
Okay, that must be off of the...
It's from your last admission.
Okay. It was actually, yeah, right there, Deb.
Here?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Okay, this is a picture of my, standing on my driveway, looking at where I want to put the proposed addition on the side of the house, and a lot of concern is coming up as far as the view from their house to my proposed addition. And there's about an 80-foot evergreen tree that they have on the property right there that basically blocks the entire view. There was two other trees that were cut down that would have made a difference, but they cut two trees down on their parcel. So what you're seeing is, if you can look way in the back between the two trees, you'll see a little portion of the house to the right, Debbie, if you can, just keep, yeah, go up right up in there. So the houses, that's the pool, and then the house is like right back up in there, so it's very hard to see, but I'm willing to put up shrubs, the fence, whatever it takes. And if you can go one more, Deb. Yeah, this is, this, I think, one of the members brought up the distance from my house to the Tierney's house, and this actually can show a little better because we were just looking at the survey last time. I'm right dead center up towards the top left portion of the parcel on the other one, Deb.
Here?
Yeah, right there. That's my house, and then if you come all the way down to where it says 2.38 acres right there, that's the Tierney's house. So they're quite a distance away from my house, and the area variance is up in that very triangular piece of parcel, right next to my existing home. So with that, they, one of the members also asked about a, an engineered drawing, and I have engineered drawings on here how to mitigate the stormwater from the roof line and the, and coming off the driveway as well. Day and Stokosa Engineering.
Stokosa.
Stokosa prepared this for me, and they said that it would handle up to 100-year storm, so it's overkill as far as the runoff from the roof lines and stuff. I have copies here if you would like to see them.
Is that what this is?
No, no, that was just a plot.
So that didn't permit with your submission?
No, this didn't.
Yeah, so you should submit that to the building department. Actually, do you have, if you have a copy, an extra copy tonight?
Actually, we have a copy, but it's cut off here.
Yeah, it's hard because the 8.5 by 11 wasn't really, this is the actual engineering drawing.
Okay, so for the record, that's an engineering, a roof drainage plan, page 1 of 1 dated March 11, 2022, prepared by Day Stokosa Engineering.
Where's your septic tank? Do you know where that is?
What's that?
Where's your septic tank?
Septic tank is right next to the patio, back corner. This is going in front on the other side of the driveway. It's going in my front lawn.
The septic tank's in the front lawn?
Ron, the septic tank is next to the patio in the back.
Yep.
This proposed engineering parcel or fillout is going to go into the front of the property.
Oh, I see. So your drainage actually is going to the other side of your property?
Yeah, it's going right across my driveway. I've got to cut the driveway.
That's so it's two little rectangles, rectangles there?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
That's where the drainage is going?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's going to drain right into the front lawn.
And this big rectangle with the X is the existing septic system?
Let me get, let me just get where you're, because I gave you the...
The X with a, in a block.
The rectangle with the X in?
Yeah.
It says here it's existing septic system location, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So the drainage is going nowhere near the septic fields or...
No, it's going up and across.
Okay, into your front yard, basically.
Yeah.
Can you, who's controlling the pictures?
Go ahead.
Can you go back, one picture where he was showing the shrubbery, I believe?
Here.
Yeah, on the left side there. Is that all new shrubbery or is it a combination of both on the left-hand side of the proposed addition?
Right now, right now, just those little circles are the existing trees. That's what you saw on the picture with the big evergreen. Those are the existing trees. The Xs coming down are actually going to be the 6-foot privacy fence.
Okay.
So it's coming from the proposed addition all the way down. Instead of cutting in front of the shed now, I mean, it's still going to cut in front of the shed, but I'm going to take it all the way down to the end of the property. It's going to come right down to the end, so.
Were you planning on putting any new shrubbery down by the proposed addition at all?
If you go up the top there, yeah, there's, I'm looking to put in some shrubs and stuff like that.
Just as a, as like somewhat of a privacy screen a little bit?
As an extra border, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think Ron Cortely was asking for that last meeting if I remember right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have any detail, I'm sorry, I'm just looking, I might be missing it. Is there detail on that shrubbery in terms of the type or the height or anything like that?
Yeah, actually, I'm thinking about three different types. Arborvitus, which is a tree shrub ranging from 3 to 14 feet, possibly Forsythia, which is a privacy hedge that grows up to about 12 feet, and even possibly lilacs, as they grow to about 3 to 5 feet.
And how tall is this structure?
Excuse me?
How tall is the structure that you're proposing?
It's the height of the existing house.
And how tall is that?
20 feet, 21 feet.
20 feet.
Yep.
Six foot?
It would be coming right off the side.
A 6-foot fence, but you got a 20-foot structure? And that's your...
The 6-foot fences going down to the backside of the house, which is going to be eliminating them from seeing it into my backyard where my swing sets and everything are.
Okay.
The evergreen tree blocks that right now.
From the Tierney's house, and what about the guy on the adjacent corner?
He did come out to the property, right?
Yeah.
Because there's a big evergreen tree there.
Right.
There's other trees in there. I don't think...
And you're planning on putting this shrubbery in, intermingled with the existing shrubbery?
Yeah, in between the trees, like I showed it there. I got some arrows coming, so wherever...
I mean, so obviously, I mean, the shrubbery's not going to grow to 20 feet high, and I don't think you're looking to block the entire house anyway.
No, I'm not.
Just looking to skirt a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of the concerns, that neighbor's brought forward. I hear you, you know. The, but there's also another neighbor, and I don't know which one it was, that also registered a concern, and...
Was it the Georges, the second email last month?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's the Georges, they said. The only, the comment that they made in their email, I don't have it in front of me, pretty much it was just, they made a comment about zoning laws as this, we feel that should stay that way. It wasn't really making any direct complaint about what was going on on this particular property.
I thought I had it here.
Yeah, I don't have it with me.
Actually, I think they're correct.
My memory is pretty good, though.
They were, yeah, they were talking about...
John Georges, 6 McGrath Terrace. Where does, do you know, where's he, where's his house?
He's on the, right around the bend from me.
So around the bend down the street?
No, right on, right, he's coming around the bend.
Right on the corner?
He's right there on the right.
But I mean, you wouldn't need us...
He has, he has shrubs lining the road there, so you can't see unless you were looking up over the bushes. As a matter of fact, I think I have it.
I have a couple of emails if you'd like me to read it.
I have it, Ron. You want me to read it? I can't.
You can read it, sure.
Okay. Okay, this is from Mr. John Georges at, what did he say it was? Let's see, "The purpose of this email is to acknowledge a receipt..." Oh, that's from, that's from you, Deb. "My name is John Georges. I live at 6 McGrath Terrace Extension across the road from 53 McGrath, David Corran's property. I agree with the building inspector that this is a violation of Town Code 150-37B. The 25-foot rule should remain in effect. I hope you can take my decision into consideration of said property seeking relief. Thank you, Georges, sent from my iPhone."
Hey, Debbie, could you go back to a couple pictures? I think in the original packet, one, keep going.
I don't know.
Yep, keep going. Keep going. One more. Oh, I think there might be one more, right there.
Okay.
Okay, there's, that's the Georges' house, Ron, and as you come around the bend, you can see they have multiple shrubs blocking basically the road and the yard. So those are the existing trees that are on, you know, on the front portion of my property. And then as you go down in the back, then you would see the big evergreen tree, and I would be putting up shrubs, you know, in between the trees to give me some type of border as well as like what the Georges did on that side to accommodate that. And that also shows like the trees that were cut down on, right next to the road. There's, Debbie, it's hard to see, but if you look at this first tree and go up about 2 inches on it, there's like a little white spot.
Right to the right of her cursor.
Oh, right between the two trees?
Yeah, there was a tree here that was cut down right here.
Right, right, okay, I got you.
And then right back here.
Yep, I see, yep.
Those two trees were cut down by the years, and that, at one time, was blocking part of the view as well.
Well, I think if you put the shrubbery in there, the way you're talking about, that should probably just not replace those trees.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I'm all for privacy. Right now, it's, right now, it's just, you know, I'm in the midst of trying to get things done, so, got the fence on order and working that route.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Corran?
I don't at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corran. Anybody have questions from the floor? Okay.
Excuse me, do we need to read, go over the rules of the public hearing again?
I would appreciate that for the record.
This is the, this is the five factors. Okay, "Please take note, verbal interruptions, shouting, and other outbursts, as well as slanderous or obscene language or signs with the body or face are prohibited. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone and podium. Speakers are limited to 3 to 4 minutes at the microphone and podium. Speaks, it says speaks, it should be speakers. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are prohibited. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, particularly this application. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. If a person continues to interrupt after the chairman has asked a person to stop, they will be asked to leave and escorted from the meeting."
Hi, Peggy Tierney, 5 McGrath Terrace Extension, the property right next door. First of all, the one picture that he said that we cut down two trees that he was showing there where our property is, they were two pine trees. We had to cut them down. They were dead due to that blight that went through. We lost like five trees.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Could you speak into my thing?
Yes, we lost five trees. We had to take those down. It wasn't like we were just taking them down for no reason. I do have an overview picture of what his property used to look like with all the oak trees that he took down, which no longer looks like that anymore. It's straight through, you can see everything. Now, if those trees were still there, we definitely would not be able to see anything that's going on up there. And yes, we do have a huge pine tree, but his property is still visible to us, and the corner piece where he says that we're set way back, if you drive back there, you can see we're not as far back as it looks like we are, and that corner piece of the property is abutting onto our private lane, which is back there. It's part of the private lane, that top piece up there, that corner, and it may seem insignificant, but it's still a part of the property and it's still our property. So we own the road, we own that corner piece up there. Also, it's in, close to an 80% variance, right there, that should be done deal, shouldn't be happening, and I think we should stick with that. You know, his, the footage has changed, what the setbacks have changed. I have Mr. Rabasco's original survey, and I'm not sure how he gained a foot from a survey that was done previously. I have also a copy from the Board of Health where his septic is, and his fields go all in the back. It's 10 feet off the house, right near where his proposed addition would be going. As for the area variance, questions that you have to answer, the five questions that need to be answered. Will there be undesirable change to nearby properties? Yes, water runoff, yes, I see he's trying to figure out a way. He wants to run it off to the front. I thought that plan was supposed to be in by February 22nd, but he's saying it was March 11th when it was put in, so I'm not sure how come that's not anywhere, the engineered plan. Benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by another feasible option other than this variance? Yes, you can go either bump off the back of the house or go to the other side. Three, requested variance is substantial? 80% substantial, right there. There's your answer, should, that is substantial. Will proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district? It was answered no, but yes, there's runoff coming onto the budding properties. He's saying that he's going to change it with his drywall and the leader drains going the opposite direction. Okay, I don't, you know, under, we haven't seen the engineering report on that, so not sure. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? It was answered no, but needing a garage for collectibles and his tractors, that's not a hardship. So that right there also is not, it should be consideration for this not to pass. The shrubbery, you know, you can plant whatever you want to plant on your property, but if he's coming, it's going to be 6 feet or 7 feet, not sure why or how that changed, it's, it just should not be happening, and it should be done deal. We shouldn't be going through this, we shouldn't have the stress of going through this. This is just ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we put something on the monitor?
Not unless I have it on a digital.
Well, you should have it because we got it from the foil. So it's my, it's the survey?
I want to have it released submitted right now.
All right, I just, I just, I can show it to you. I'll take you that copy. My name is Al Rabasco. I am the builder of that house. I find myself here tonight because the Tierneys called me and asked me some questions, and I've known the Tierneys all my life.
I'm sorry, did you, we did not get your name.
Al Rabasco. I live in La Grange now, a planning board member and a board member. I was a planning board member, and I'm a board member in La Grange, but I basically told them to hire an engineer and a lawyer, but I didn't think this was going to move forward because I was wrong, but the Tierneys put some complaints in for violations. I don't know if the ZBA was aware of those complaints that they made official tonight. One is there's an illegal apartment in the basement of this house. They finished the bonus room on this house. The reason why I wanted to show the map to answer some of the questions where we gained a foot and lost a foot, but if there's apartment in that basement, that's a 1,700 square foot basement. If the bonus room is finished above the garage, that's another 600 square feet, 550, 600, which means this house is now finished 4,620 square feet approximately on a three-bedroom septic approval. There's no way, I built that house. I barely could fit it, that's why it's on the right side. In the map, which I'll show you, I think we have copies to give you, which you have because we got it from you, because I don't have this stuff anymore. I mean, I sold that house years ago.
Excuse me, are you talking about the original submission?
The, yeah, my, I built the house that I gave you, you do have, right. It shows...
I lost this evening, I just...
Now, if you notice, he leaves, there's a wetland buffer, and I can't, I don't know if it's a town buffer, federal, or state wetland, because there's all three there. That buffer is on that survey, which I have here, which we can give copies to them if you don't have it, and it shows 75 foot. When I built this house, I listened to your meetings, and one of your questions was, why the heck did the builder stick the house all the way to the right corner? I had no choice because it was the only way I could fit the house with the 75-foot setback, which is a law you can't put any structure in it. He has a pool with a CO that's in the 75-foot setback or bad, which I don't know how that caught through, but it's approved, and he's got a garage that I don't think...
Excuse me, I have this microphone.
Oh, okay, and he's got a garage that, I'm not sure if it meets the front and side setbacks either. So that question is, I just know it's common practice that if somebody has a violation, it shouldn't even be in front of you until those violations are cleared up, but if in fact that square footage, he's already got 4,600 square foot, that might answer the reason why we need so many garages. Now we want to add to that. Also, to get a variance, especially an extreme variance, it has to conform, minor, I read the state code on the variance, I never was on the ZBI, so I don't know all those things, but it has to conform with the community, so it has to kind of fit in. It's already double the size of any house or any other structure in that development, so it doesn't really conform with what's there in any way, so it's double the size already. The septic cannot be built any bigger if they try, there's no room. So technically, if those violations exist, he's already overbuilt and in violation, so I think those things really should have been addressed. Also, I checked your code. There's a chicken coop there with chickens. I went by there today, there's over a dozen chickens in that coop, four ducks and some other birds. A chicken coop in this town is considered a structure. It needs to be 25 foot off the setback. It is not, so that chicken coop, and they made an official complaint on this, that chicken coop has to be moved. It doesn't comply with the code of the town, either do the chickens at this point.
Okay.
So he's got like a, I mean, there's a ton of violations here already, which I think that this board has to know about before making a ruling on this.
The thing, Mr. Rabasco, I don't want to cut you off.
Go ahead.
I understand, you know, the frustration, and we are aware of these issues.
Okay.
Okay. And the applicant is trying to remedy those issues, okay? He has permits in, and he's working with the zoning administrator to address those issues.
But you can come in front of a board in this town with violations?
He's working those violations out with the zoning administrator.
I just thought it was precedent, I'm just, I've never seen a town that allows, unless the, you're in front of the board to remedy the violation, but if you're not, you know, that's just my understanding.
He is working, he is making those efforts to, and we appreciate that.
Right. I just don't, if, the reason why it shouldn't be moving forward, if there's a finished basement there with an apartment in it, he doesn't have a septic that can even handle that, let alone an addition.
We'll refer that to...
So that's just my, you know, my comments on that. Let me just make sure. So I went over the survey, so, yeah, in other words, he also has to turn in a complete survey. He doesn't, he leaves out things he doesn't want you to see. Now, the survey that I did is a licensed survey, and he gained a foot, so I tried to figure, I said, either one of these licensed surveys are wrong, but I figured out how he gained a foot. he gained a foot. He's measuring off the patio, not the house, if you look closely at his survey. That's where he gained a foot, but he's building the addition off the house, not the patio. So that's not correct, and so that's the problem, that's why you need a licensed surveyor to locate and as-built up everything he's doing, show the wetlands, buffers, complete, so, so in actuality, the variance will be bigger than what he's saying now, if he continues, because you see the twenty-seven-three, that doesn't match the licensed surveyor that I used, uh, by a foot. That's where he gained the foot. I couldn't figure it out until I studied, I, I can't believe licensed surveyors are wrong. It's twenty-six-one off the side of the house, not twenty-seven-three. That's off the patio, so that's incorrect.
Still excessive, we know.
Right, but it's even more excessive now. Okay, so I just, basically, that's what, this is to the extreme on every level, every level. And, you know, and half a dozen violations, so, you know, the Tierneys, listen, they were talking about moving, it was very stressful for them to finally, I said, you guys are crazy, you know, this is just, it's an extreme variance on something that's already extreme. All right, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. You know, this, this board is, we have to focus on this application, and we are aware of all these other issues, but that, the fact that he's working with the zoning administrator, we have to let the zoning administrator run with that. We can't, we cannot manage that, okay? We are here to address this applicant, this application, and we should have to stick with the five factors, and that's how we, we will determine whether this thing goes forward or not, on the five factors, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that. You, you have the issues before the board, you have to act within your jurisdiction, and I think, uh, the building inspector and code enforcement officer has his jurisdiction, and you've got yours.
Right. I got my job, he's got his. Uh, does anybody else have any comments who want to come forward?
I just want to make a quick comment. Hello, my name is Frank Beardian. I reside at thirty-eight McGrath Terrace, approximately one-hundred-seventy-five feet in front of Mr. Coran's property. I've lived at this address for seventeen years and never had an issue with Mr. Coran or the way he keeps his property. That being said, when I'm in my backyard, I can see the entire front of his home. My wife and I have absolutely no problem with Mr. Coran moving forward with his plan, and I feel that the improvements he makes adds a value to the surrounding homes in the area. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, just for, um, educational purposes, I've been watching all the board meetings, and so, um, I'm not for any particular person, but I am for learning the process, and so, um, I just had a question, I have several, uh, questions that you may or may not answer, but, um, the application, um, that I was looking at, which is this one, it, it didn't match the drawings, so I said, should the application be rejected and be submitted with the, with the correct requested changes? Um, should the board compare the request to the guide, and I give the applicant suggestions on what to do? Um, if the property is encroaching on wetlands, shouldn't the board look into this to make a determination before this goes any further? Um, does the town's wetlands laws apply in this case, because those laws were changed when fifty was revised? Um, the engineer plan did not meet the deadline, uh, what is done about that? Um, procedurally, the paperwork reviewed today should have been submitted, so it could have been attached to the agenda for the public to view. Um, if the building inspector does not agree with this project, what considerations of his determination is considered, if it's considered at all? Um, and then I think, uh, it seems, uh, rules and procedures, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is German Ruiz. I reside at forty-six Flint Rock Road in Fischko. I was at the February fifteenth zone board public meeting and thought, this is exactly why the town has a zoning board of appeals, to give some relief to the applicant considering where the area variance is being requested. In my opinion, this should not be a problem. I'm in, I'm in total favor of Mr. Coran receiving the approval of this variance.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, now, should we proceed? Should we close the hearing at this point, since there's no more?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's your option. If there's anything more that you want to hear from the applicant, uh, is there any further requests that you have or anything that you need clarified, then you should address that with the applicant and ask him for it now. Um, yeah, if there's anything else that you think you want to-
Yeah, we beat this one pretty good.
Yes.
I think, I don't think we have any more questions for the applicant.
Yeah, so, um, then it would be appropriate to, uh, close the public hearing, and just know that once you do, you, the, the hearing is closed, and then your decision is going to have to come within sixty-two days, come tonight, but it's got to come within sixty-two days on the, on the hearing record.
Okay.
Um, so what you could do, if you were inclined to close the public hearing tonight, you could then deliberate and talk, you know, now about it. Sometimes, if you could start deliberating and talking, you know, amongst yourselves about it now on the record while the hearing is open, some boards will do that, in case something comes up and you say, well, jeez, let's ask the applicant, or let's, you know, let's hear about that. That way, the hearing is open still, and you can accept that answer into the record. That's also acceptable procedure.
So we have, uh, we don't have to make a decision tonight, then?
You don't have to. If you close the public hearing, you have sixty-two days from the moment the public hearing is closed to render a decision.
I would rather do that. I would, I would prefer that. Uh, okay, let's make a motion, close the public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, no one opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you. Uh, you want to discuss this more in detail?
Yeah, I guess we can.
Okay.
I really wish, I wish Ron was here. I mean, he's been, he's been through the whole thing. Will this-
Yeah, I would prefer the, Mr. Cretelli to be here too, to discuss this further, you know?
That's, that's certainly acceptable. You could do that at the next meeting, you'd be well within your timeframe to render a decision.
I mean, we could still talk about things, but I'd rather have his input too.
Yeah, if, if, I mean, that's rational, he was here for the entire first part of the hearing, and, uh, that would be acceptable, certainly acceptable.
Yeah, let's, let's go with that, okay? Should, should we go through the, the five factors?
Well, if you want to-
The board is aware, or-
Well, if you want to get the benefit of Mr. Cretelli's input, I think it's best to wait until he's here and he can input and interact with you while you're going through the factors.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
All right, we'll do that, okay? So we can adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, unless there's any other business, any minutes or any other business that the board has.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's, uh, make a motion to accept the previous minutes, the last month's minutes.
I make a motion, accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we accept the minutes.
Thank you.
And I, is there anything else that, that, uh, okay, let's make a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.